It's less than a hardship like that. No whiner.
No, not at all.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, you said that, that's great.
Yeah.
I kind of rushed them.
Yes.
And I don't like it now.
How you doing, Kat?
I like it, I go well. I had to transfer half of my stuff over.
Very late.
So I'm gonna take it back, but yet I kind of was rushing them because I had a one o'clock.
See, they just handed everything off to us.
Not so much my side, because he's tired. It's done, but then I went to look at it. I have to download my thing. Transfer everything.
So you can do settings.
We're gonna call the meeting to order. Calling the meeting to order?
I don't think you can.
No, we don't have a fourth. Yeah, we don't have a fourth.
Oh, okay. See?
They're here.
They're here.
They're here, they're upstairs, John and Claude.
Oh, oh, sure.
You probably forgot.
They probably forgot to start.
What time it is?
We have upstairs.
Two. I know, sure, corn. So how's everybody today? Are we all fine?
He's still here. Jeff, just three hundred and four, it's like a hundred and fifty. And you must use the entire budget. But. That area or it's foggy or something. I mean, I want to know if there's some questions. Thank you very much. Oh. Thank you for trying.
That's what I thought.
First time in eight years.
Oh, baloney. The first meeting we had together, you and I were late, so it's the second time.
Why were we late?
We remember we went across.
I know.
Dinner. So I mean, it's the second time. Always, you know, minimize.
All right, we're gonna bring the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call.
Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
He's excused.
Councilmember Baggett.
Excused.
I haven't heard.
I haven't heard.
I haven't heard from him, have you? Maybe he's upstairs, did he have dinner with you?
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Decorsi.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Troutman was.
Here.
Councilmember Wales.
Here.
All right. Do we have any announcements, reports, or presentations? So we'll start off with the agenda items for council discussion. And first up is an item, King County Metro presentation, the mobility plan and service changes. And Director God, okay, we know who's up. This is item number three A.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the record, my name is Cecile Malik, senior transportation planner for Auburn. And I'm here to introduce the team from King County Metro, who came previously to talk to you about some planned service changes in the city of Auburn. So they have conducted some outreach, they have worked with staff, and today they are going to present the proposed changes in transit service.
Hello, thank you for having us. My name is Natalie Westberg, and I'm the project manager for the area mobility plan. And I'm joined tonight by Jeremy Victor, who is the South King County Service Planning Lead at Metro. I will say, we have a few updates to the slide deck that's in your packet, so Cecile will be sharing some updated copies with you. These were updated to incorporate some engagement efforts that happened late last week, so we didn't have time to make them into the deck. All right, so we have presented on this project to you all before, but a quick reminder of the goals of this effort. First, to increase the efficiency of our network and to focus our investments on equity priority areas. Second, we are working to develop a network of different mobility services that are right-sized to meet riders' varied needs. Third, part of this project is creating a single route that does not exist today, from Renton to Kent to Auburn, to help prepare for the future Rapid Ride I-line. That route will be upgraded in 2023 to the I-line, which you'll hear about later from my colleague Greg. And finally, through our project process, we have really worked to inform, involve, and empower historically underrepresented people in our project's decision-making process. This project will be making service changes in September 2020. We started this process this past spring, spring 2019, working with city staff and with three different engagement phases. First, to look at general needs and priorities in the community, ways that were not meeting people's transit needs today, mobility barriers to moving through South King County easily. Over the summer, we proposed different alternatives for what we might change. We received feedback from the public, from staff at the city of Auburn, who have been a very critical part of our process. And we just finished our final round of engagement this fall, where we were presenting a final proposed network concept and getting feedback from the public on that. We are now working on our ordinance materials, which we will bring to the King County Council in early 2020, first quarter of 2020. And then we will be doing service change, education, and working with the city to get some of the changes implemented on the ground. As I said, we've had three different engagement phases over about the last eight months for this project. We have a goal to reach folks who are normally not represented in our project decision-making process. So we've used a number of different channels to try to reach people and let them know about the changes we're considering. The first is that we've done a lot of community organization interviews. Listed are a few examples of some of the organizations in Auburn that we've worked with. We have shown up at a lot of community events throughout the year, to table, to talk to people about proposed changes, maybe people who aren't using transit service today. We've had online surveys through every phase of the project. And we've also done some onboard engagement, getting on routes and talking to people about a change that might happen to the route that they're riding and getting their feedback on the proposed change. I also want to highlight a group that has been really a critical part of our decision-making process. And that is our Mobility Board, a community advisory group of 27 members who live, work, and travel throughout Renton, Kent, and Auburn. We have both native English, Somali, and Spanish speakers, and translation in both Somali and Spanish at our meetings. And we have bilingual speakers of a number of other languages. And within this group, we have folks who are seniors, who are students, and who are riders with disabilities. So really helping us represent some of those perspectives that we don't hear about through traditional online engagement forums. This group is represented here on this chart by the Green Bus. They helped us prioritize the needs that we are going to focus on in this project. They have reviewed and revised our recommendations for changes. And we met with them last week to review our final proposal that we will be taking to the King County Council. So in the Auburn area, these are the four needs that this Mobility Board prioritized for us to focus on. The first was improving service south of Auburn Station. The second was providing more weekend and late-night service to help people travel to different shift start times and use transit throughout the week instead of just during commuter hours. The third is to create shorter, frequent, and more reliable routes in Auburn. So instead of having a route that travels hourly, having something that's maybe every 15 or 30 minutes, so people can actually use it and travel more freely. And then finally, establish a network of different services throughout Auburn, so you don't just have to travel through Auburn Station to use different routes and travel north, south, east, and west in Auburn. We reviewed the final concept with our Mobility Board last Tuesday. We mostly heard either "I love this" or "I'm fine with this" concept. We had a few members who were really interested in some alternative pathways through South Auburn, and we're continuing to work with City of Auburn staff to see if we can make some of the improvements that might be needed to enable those pathways and help serve the les go area. But by and large, we had a lot of support for this concept. With an additional note to emphasize adding more Sunday service when we have more resources available. So that's something that we'll be carrying forward as a priority for future investment. So I'm gonna walk you through some of the changes that are in the proposal. The first, as I mentioned, is creating that new frequent route, which we are going to call the Route 160, which will travel from Renton to Kent to Auburn. And this will bring a lot more night and weekend service to Auburn along Auburn Way. That will be a frequent route with 15-minute or faster service. That route will replace the Route 180, which means that we need to provide a new route that connects South Auburn to Auburn Station. So we will be creating a new Route 184. And this route will be much shorter, so it will provide a more reliable connection for people in South Auburn to access Auburn Station and downtown Auburn. As I said, one of the primary things we heard in engagement was the need for more service south of Auburn Station. And we heard a lot about the importance of the connection to Walmart and the outlet collection. So we are looking at improving the level of service, connecting people from Auburn Station to Walmart, and then further south to jobs in Algonah and Pacific, and also providing the direct connection into Walmart with every single trip that travels through this area. We heard about the need for more Sunday service, particularly connecting to Green River College and the Lee Hill area. So we will be adding Sunday service on Route 164, which will provide that connection to Green River and also access further north to destinations along Kent-Kangling and Kent, and shopping, and other commercial needs on Sundays. And finally, we're looking at merging two routes that travel on the same pathway. One is a peak-only route, and one is a midday route. And we're looking to simplify the network and turn that into a single all-day route that connects people from Auburn to the Muckel Street area out to Inumclaw. So one change that we are looking at to help resource some of these investments is reinvesting Route 910 resources in more frequent service on Auburn Way and between Auburn Station and the Walmart. So this would involve deleting service on this portion that you can see with the gray dotted line on I Street, and then on the 15th and A Street area. What this would mean is that 90% of existing Route 910 riders would have access to more frequent service, but there would be 10% that would be about four blocks, up to four blocks, from a replacement bus stop. We heard a lot of support for this concept, both from our Mobility Board and from online engagement and community events. But we heard a number of concerns from City of Auburn staff about folks with mobility issues who live in the I Street corridor in particular, who need travel options. So in the last month or so, we have doubled down on our onboard engagement to talk to riders about the proposed change and make sure that some of the most vulnerable users who maybe aren't getting our online information are aware of what's going on. We talked to about 50% of the route's ridership. There are about 110 daily riders of this route. 0% of the people who took a survey onboard said that they would no longer be able to use transit based on this change. And 82% felt that this change met the area's needs. So this was somewhat lower. We heard 100% on our online survey, 82% onboard. So we will be coordinating with Hyde Shuttle providers and with access to make sure that those users are aware of other mobility options that might better meet their needs. On the right side of the slide here, there's a snapshot of the demographics of who we talked to onboard, primarily non-white, low-income, and a pretty high percent of folks who identify as having a disability. So I just want to ground this service change in kind of a span of near-term investments and changes to the Auburn network. In fall 2019, through our routine investment process, we invested more service in Route 164, which connects to Green River College and Lee Hill. In 2020, we will be making the changes that I just described and investing additional service hours through the updated area mobility plan. Around 2022, we will begin another planning process similar to this one to prepare for the future Federal Way Link extension. So that will look at some of the east-west connections from Auburn into Federal Way. In 2023, we will begin service on the Rapid Ride I-line, which will be a huge investment in capital dollars in Auburn. And then in 2024, we would implement those service changes associated with Federal Way extension. So we will continue to be here over the next four years, and you'll probably see these two faces, hopefully. So like I said, we are working on finalizing our service change ordinance. We've been coordinating with your technical staff, and based on your input, we'll be working with them to see if Auburn would provide a letter of support for our proposed plan. We will be bringing this recommendation to the King County Council in early 2020, and then continue our coordination with Auburn on educating riders, letting them know about the proposed changes, and making the associated changes to bus stop locations or any other kind of minor tweaks to the roadway network. Any questions?
Yes, Councilwoman Decorsi.
Thank you for your presentation. We're gonna focus on Auburn, appreciate that. At our RTC meeting last week, Jeremy and Gillan gave us a briefing. He mentioned the potential impacts of I-976. Has there been any discussion or consideration in relation to the what-ifs for this particular project if 976 is truly successful?
Yeah, there has been. And Metro remains committed to making the changes that we're proposing and moving forward, but supporting that proposal. So at this point, we're, there's really no Plan B for the set of changes that we're moving forward with this project.
Any questions from the council members? John?
I'd just like to offer my support for a letter of support from the Auburn City Council.
Any other questions before we talk about that? All right. Everybody okay with that letter? We have consensus?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if I can just add, so we'll actually be bringing that back to you at a later meeting to discuss.
Thank you. I figured we'd have another shot at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
And thank you to the City of Auburn staff. They have been wonderful to work with.
Next up is we have a presentation, King County Metro on Rapid Ride I-line preferred alignment and progress.
All right, so now that you've heard about all the service changes, you will hear from Metro staff about one line. So the 180 would be replaced later on by the Rapid Ride I-line. And Greg will come and talk to you about the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Cecile.
All right, good evening. Thank you so much for having us. I know it looks like, we were looking at the agenda, it looks like a packed agenda. So we will work to use your time efficiently, and we really appreciate you making time for this project update. I'm Hannah McIntosh. I am the Program Director for the Rapid Ride program at King County Metro. And I am joined by?
I'm Greg McKnight. I'm the Project Manager with King County Metro for the Rapid Ride I-line.
And Greg is gonna do most of the talking this evening, but I wanted to join this presentation this night, or tonight, because we are at a special milestone in the project process where we are moving towards really understanding what our preferred alternative is and engaging with the Federal Transit Administration in a meaningful way and starting the process to ask for funding for the I-line project. And so, wanted to be here for this conversation tonight. Just as a reminder, I think all of you know this, we've had enough conversations, but Rapid Ride is a product that King County Metro is very proud of. And in Metro Connects, our long-range vision for transportation, we anticipate a significant expansion of the Rapid Ride network. There are six lines existing today. They carry about 20% of Metro's countywide ridership. And there are seven lines in our capital improvement program. I think the big takeaway for the timeline in front of you is that the I-line and this investment in Auburn connecting to Kent and up through Renton was one of our first priorities with this first wave of Rapid Ride expansion. Rapid Ride is more than a big red bus. It really is what I think the future of bus transportation is gonna have to be in our region as we grow increasingly congested. We are learning that more and more, we do need to invest not just in great transit service, but also in capital changes and improvements to our streets, to our signals, to our sidewalks, to get people to the bus. Those capital investments that really keep that service reliable and keep it on time. And I think you're seeing that now on Rapid Ride, and it's something that I think we're gonna just have to continue as our region grows more and more congested. So a little bit more about these capital investments. These really are the features of Rapid Ride that make it unique, that do make it more than just a local bus service. So we have unique passenger facilities, and we have priority at intersections, and then in some cases even dedicated lanes for buses to keep them moving quickly and on time. And another key feature of all of this, is that you know better than I do, is that as the transit agency, we don't own the streets and sidewalks. And so a partnership with the local cities is key to making this a success. And I want to echo what Natalie said about the really deep engagement and productive partnership that we have been able to have with City of Auburn staff. I want to thank Cecile and many others that I won't name. They just have, they always pick up the phone when we call. They're engaged, they're creative. I just can't say enough about that positive working relationship, so thank you. And I think that was it. So Greg, we'll talk a bit more about the details of where we are with the project.
Yeah, so specifically on the Rapid Ride I-line, we're in a pretty exciting place right now as far as the overall project schedule. But just a bit of an overview first. We are really looking to invest in getting people to, from, and around Auburn and the rest of the communities up through Kent and Renton. And it builds off of the work that you just heard from Natalie about. We really want to really invest in this spine through these communities and really help people get to the destinations that they're trying to get to. Like the Mobility Plan, we do have a goal of serving historically underserved communities and improving all of that access so people can get where they need to go. And also, it's complementary to the city's vision for that balanced transportation network that really meets the diverse needs of the community. So where we're at in the process, we've been in our planning phase throughout most of 2019, and we're moving into our preliminary design, which is where we're really honing in on just what elements will really meet the goals of that project. And so we're assessing those needs, coming up with some draft concepts, vetting those with the community, vetting those with the City of Auburn, with all of you, so that we can finalize what that project's going to look like. And that arrow off to the side there is kind of where we're at right now, which is defining the locally preferred alternative, which is a concept that is mandated by the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration, on the process that we're trying to go through with them about defining what exactly we want to build. So that's the point we're at right now. And as you can see, we're going to move into some more design phases, actually start building some things, and looking for a start of service in September 2023. And so a little bit about the budget for this. As we mentioned, this is a large capital project. One of the great features of Rapid Ride is the amount of investment that we can do in the community. So we're looking at about $120 million investment. Majority of that is already put into the King County budget. We have a couple of local grants that we've already received. And then that large red chunk at the other side is a FTA small starts funding that we are going to be looking to compete against all of our other transit friends across the country with an application at the end of next summer. And so let's talk a little bit about what we've been doing today. We've been doing a lot of community engagement, a lot of the same engagement that Natalie's team has been doing throughout the year. We've been using a lot of that same work, a lot of the same events, to really assess those needs, figure out where the community needs to get so that we can figure out where those investments should be spent. So some of that feedback that we've had so far has been about our routing and our station placement. So some of that feedback was on where the alignment should be. Our Metro Connects vision showed an alignment on Auburn Way. We asked the community, we worked with technical staff here at the City of Auburn, including your tab that we've met with several times, on where the route should be serving. So we did look at some potential other routes, such as serving the D Street corridor instead of staying on Auburn Way, as well as serving the I Street corridor between 277th down to 15th. So that process has been something that's been ongoing throughout the summer and the fall. And we've been working very closely on determining what some of those trade-offs would be. And coming back to some of those goals of the Rapid Ride investment, really looking at what are those time savings? What are people looking for in that investment? Where are people trying to get? And can we serve them in the best way possible? And then also, what would be some of those trade-offs of actually being able to operate the buses in certain ways? There's a few challenges with the I Street corridor in that it has some newer roundabouts that aren't quite perfect for our bus to go through and some tight corners. Not necessarily fatal flaws, but definitely something that weighed in that decision-making process. So it's definitely something that we have been working very closely with Cecile and the rest of the staff here, as well as our community partners. The other aspect of some of the ongoing work is really about stations. So we were able to ask some very specific questions out in the community of where people wanted to access the bus. And so we took that feedback to propose where our Rapid Ride stations would be. One of our features with Rapid Ride is we try to have a little bit farther station spacing so that we can achieve some of those speed goals. So people don't have to, the bus doesn't stop as often, and it can be a little more reliable and get people there, where they're going, a little bit faster. But obviously, we want to make sure the stations are where people actually want to be. So that was a big part of our summer and fall engagement, was asking people where they would prefer stations. And so where we're at now is we are talking to people about where we think stations should be. And then that next step will be, okay, if these are where we think the station should be, what are those other barriers of getting to and from the station? So are you, are there sidewalk gaps? Are there safe crosswalks to use to get to these locations that we think a station should be in? So here's an example of a potential station location. It says at 30th, and it shows our potential. shows our potential parts that we are very excited about, that we'll be able to use with the Rapid Ride I-line. And so there, one of the goals of Rapid Ride is that we can really create that sense of place, people know where the station is, they see, they see the iconography, the red has been something that we hear very frequently, that people relate to, and so they really know where the bus will be stopping, and that way people can, can really find, find the stations and feel safe in accessing the bus when they need to. So where we're at now is really defining what that locally preferred alternative is. So I'm going to go through a few, few of the main features of what the FTA is looking for in that, and the first one is talking about why we're doing the project, what is that purpose and need? So as we've mentioned through, throughout the presentations today, we're really trying to promote ridership through frequent, convenient, high-quality transit service, and it's really to fit the needs of the community, to build that robust transportation network and serve communities that have been historically underserved. Some of the project highlights would be talking about that it's a 17-mile corridor, it's connecting some very important transportation destinations such as the Sounder train in both Auburn and Kent, some regional destinations such as the Valley Medical Center in Renton, which we've heard a lot of, of need, that people want better access to places like the, the medical center and some of the colleges along the route. And then the next part would be what that mode is. FTA gives a lot of money to a lot of different types of projects, including light rail, so they want to know what kind of mode we are, and we are going to be a bus, bus rapid transit, a little bit more nimble, but one important feature of that for the FTA is that we will be using a diesel-electric hybrid fleet. King County Metro is committed to moving to an all-electric fleet, but the timeline for that implementation isn't going to quite line up with the timeline of our start date, so when we do start service in 2023, we will be using a hybrid vehicle, and then as the technology comes online and we, and we get the, the new buses, that'll get turned over into the full electric fleet. One of the other features of that locally preferred alternative is where the stations will be, the location, the intersections of stations, as well as kind of some of the general amenities that you can expect. It won't necessarily say exactly what is at each station, but it will show the types of amenities that we could have, talking about the shelters, the pedestrian scale lighting, bicycle parking, all of the, the real-time information signs, some of the different features that can really help people understand where they're catching the bus and give them the information they're looking for. And the final thing that will be on there will be the actual routing of, of the service, and so that's, as I mentioned earlier, we've been working a lot with your staff here on where that route should go, and making sure that we're vetting that with, with our community partners. So what's happening right now with our community engagement, we are actually in a phase of engagement right now, we have a live, online, open house, we've been out at a lot of community events throughout the fall, so please, everyone, go home, send out this link to all of your friends and neighbors, we'll gladly take some more users, we have just a few more days of the survey, but we're, we're really talking about what we've been proposing, so where those stations should be, and, and then where are those additional barriers, if there's some sidewalks missing, or people don't feel safe with the amount of lighting that might be available, we're really trying to find out what some of those other needs might be. And so what's happening now, we're trying to finalize this locally preferred alternative, which is going to have to be adopted by our King County Council, which will be due by the top of the year, and part of that process is that we will be seeking a letter of support, much like Natalie is for the mobility plan, so that we can, as we're going through that council process, our King County Council can see that we've been working with all of our jurisdictional partners to make sure that everybody is excited about the project, and so that's, again, coming back to you in two weeks, as Ingrid said, we'll be looking to, to garner a letter of support for this project as well. But that's really still just kind of the beginning of this project, as I mentioned on the timeline, we're looking at a start of service in 2023, so we have a lot of technical details to work out, Cecile has been amazing at helping us make sure that we are putting the stations in just the right place, maybe tweaking some things, where we can get some of those speed and reliability improvements, so we have a lot of work yet to do on that, so we are, we are just getting started on some of these technical details. And of course, we'll be continuing to work with you and, and the community throughout all of these phases. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Do members have any questions at this point?
Yes.
I think in this case also a letter is appropriate, my opinion, to move this forward, and thank both of you, Hannah and Greg, and your staff for doing the outreach that you're doing, doing key items. As a member of RTC, we've been asking Metro for it for a long time, and it's great to see that this is happening in action on a regular and frequent basis, to engage not only communities, but also working very closely with the city staff, those of us at RTC, with the city staff, we wouldn't be doing our job as elected, because they provide us with input and information and the data we need to make sense during the RTCs. Cecile, come to me at the last two meetings, and Joe Welsh goes in meetings with me, and it's really great to have that level of, of staff engagement all around, so just want to commend both of you for doing that kind of outreach, because it's really important, and this is very exciting for the City of Auburn to get an I-line here like this to help the majority of people how to use Metro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Mayor, did you have anything?
No, just appreciate the work and look forward to the time when it, when it becomes a reality.
Yes.
We share that.
Thank you, Hannah and Greg, we appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next up on the agenda for the study session tonight, we'll have a presentation on ordinance number 6753, and I think Doug or Harry would be here.
Thank you for having me, Harry Boucher, your city prosecutor. I am asking the court to consider, the council to consider an ordinance removing, I know I say court a lot, that's what I'm used to, the council to consider an ordinance amending our controlled substance and drug penalty ordinances to remove the mandatory minimum penalties that are currently in there. When we drafted and initially passed those ordinances, state law called for mandatory minimum penalties of a day in jail and either a $250 or a $500 fine if you're convicted of one of those offenses, depending on if it's a first or a subsequent offense, and we modeled our ordinances to have those matching provisions, to match state law. Since we passed those ordinances and we've kind of been going through and prosecuting them, a couple of things have happened, one is the state repealed their mandatory minimum law, so now there is no mandatory minimum if you're prosecuted under the state law, but there is in Auburn, and so that mismatch could present an issue, so the state code has a preemption clause in it that wants uniformity in penalties across the state, and so they don't want to see that difference in penalties depending on where you go. So I think it's the right thing to do for that reason. The other thing I'll tell you that happened is, a few years ago, the Court of Appeals decided a case called State versus Blazina, which says that if an offender, I'm oversimplifying it, essentially what it says is if an offender can't pay, they can't afford to pay fines, they don't have to pay. And it requires the sentencing judge to do an inquiry with the individual to say, what are your sources of income, and, and these kinds of things, do you have income and assets and the ability to pay, and if the person says no after that inquiry, then it doesn't matter if they're mandatory fines or not, 200, 500, or whatever they are, they don't have to pay them. And so I think it's the right thing to do to match state law, to avoid any issues with our enforcement, we're starting to get, as you know, a little more scrutiny on misdemeanor drug prosecutions because of, especially in this county with, with some things that are going on, and we're doing quite a bit of that, so it makes sense to me, I don't think that removal of those minimums is really going to do much, there's no real downside to our cases, most of our offenders do, end up doing substantially more than a single day in jail, just drug offenders, as you can probably imagine, are not typically very reliable for court, they have a lot of repeat history, they have a lot of failures to appear to the court as directed, they end up serving time that way, just even just getting the case processed. And the other thing about it is that if we feel it's appropriate to ask for jail, we can still ask for it, and the court can still impose it, it's just they would be, they wouldn't have to, is the only difference, so.
That it?
That's it.
Do we have any questions from council members or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up on the agenda is ordinance number 6745, and will be presented by Jeff Dixon and Cindy Langsfield.
Oh, whoops, no, Cindy, I guess is just out in the audience tonight from the school district, sorry.
All right. Thank you.
My mistake.
No problem.
Good evening, I'm not Cindy.
Thank you.
My name is Anthony Avery, I'm a senior planner in the Department of Community Development, Planning Services Division, and I'm here to speak to you about two items, the first of which on the agenda is 2020 school impact fees. Before I get started too quickly, I want to make sure that I'm sharing, you should have all received a binder with the Comprehensive Plan Amendments, if I make reference to the binder, this is what I'm referring to. I'm going to work really hard to stay consistent with that reference, but if I reference working binder, binder, or Comprehensive Plan Amendment binder, just know it's the same thing, I'm just talking about this binder that, that you all received a couple of weeks ago. So we're here before you...
Could you... Just a second.
Yes.
When you refer to what you're talking about, could you also let us know what page so we could go back and refer to it, is, do you have that or not?
I can let you know the tabs, if that, if that would help.
Do you want to borrow one for this evening?
No.
Okay.
Just for me to go back and...
Yeah, I'll, I'll be able to, I'll, I'll be able to share the tabs and get a little bit more specific, but I don't, I shouldn't be referencing too often very specific pages, I'll more or less be generally speaking broadly about the contents.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, of course. So first, this is something that, that we've done, that we do every year in order to stay consistent and up to date with capital facilities, projects, and plans that the school districts put forth, and I just would like to start with some, a little bit of basics. Within the City of Auburn, we have four school districts, the largest of which is Auburn School District encompassing most of the city, we also have portions of school districts within different parts of our city, so Derringer is down south, Federal Way is west on the West Hill, and Kent has some space up north. So every year, the districts provide a capital facilities plan, and each year they provide us with a recommendation, a recommended school impact fee, which the city then collects and, at the time of application or at the time of permitting for any developments that occur in the city. School impact fees are assigned on a per-unit basis, and they're distinguished between single-family units and multifamily units. Auburn City Code has copies of these capital facilities plans as part of the Comprehensive Plan, and we'll be talking about those, the changes to that at the next section, but just know that that's where the authority is coming from. So starting with Derringer School District, this, Derringer School District is in Pierce County, and as part of their capital facilities plan, they've identified proposed fees for a single family of $7,729 and multifamily of $3,514. Each year, Pierce County identifies a countywide policy or a countywide impact fee that is adopted across Pierce County, and staff is recommending that, as we do typically, as we've done typically in the past, that our ordinance and our impact fees match Pierce County. One thing that I would like to point out, as I was going through this presentation, I noticed a typographical error, so if you'll notice on page 67, there's a, of your packet, there is a table outlining all the last year's school impact fees, the proposed fee for this year, and the difference between the two for both single-family and multifamily. The number that is found on that page for Derringer School District is different than what's been found on page 56 of your packet, which is section one of the ordinance that actually affects the change. So what we would recommend doing is amending page 56 of your packet to read with these Pierce County impact fee recommendations of $3,815 for single-family units and $2,025 The next school district is Auburn School District, again, the largest one in our city, and the initial submittal for single, for school impact fees came in at $6,905 for single families and $14,667 for multifamilies. The multifamily impact fee is up from $4,488 last year, and so after consideration, the school district has resubmitted different recommendations, which follow the tiered system that you see on the screen before you. This system is meant to more accurately represent the probability of displaced children within the households and reduce the burden, or make it more equitable across, across the city. So that's tiered up with either $2,000 or $3,000 increments, and it's sorted out by bedrooms within the units.
Yes, council member.
What's a member with?
I'm glad to see that, this is not a question, but I've always been concerned with Federal Way, who's always had their so blasted high, that I'm glad that we've raised ours in, in Auburn, so, thank you.
And part of that, part of that increase was due to, we're seeing more and more families living in apartments and multifamily units, and so that's, those recommendations have come from the school district to identify those changes. Federal Way School District requests moderate changes, modest changes, so a single-family impact fee of a little over $5,000, $5,035, and a small increase for multifamily of $20,768. Likewise, Kent School District has proposed modest increases for both their single-family and multifamily impact fees that actually coincides with the Consumer Product Index. And so to recap and kind of highlight the, the high-level points that we discussed, Pierce County school rate is used for the rest of Derringer School District, we recommend maintaining that same rate within the City of Auburn city limits, there is a tiered multifamily impact fee recommended for Auburn School District, and single-family and federal and multifamily impact fees for Kent and Federal Way have modest changes within them. There are any questions, comments, I'd be happy to entertain those at this time.
Council members? Yes, mayor.
Just one thing, we, I can't tell if Jeff, yes, Jeff Tate was included on the email from the Master Builders Association in support of the Auburn School District's multifamily impact fees and the tiered approach. The tiered approach proposed better, proposed better achieves the impact of new development and is supported by the development community, so just wanted to add that in there. That's not always the case that the Master Builders like the school impact fees, but in this case, they are very supportive of that tiered approach.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments by council? Saying none, thank you very much, appreciate it. We'll move next to ordinance number 6746, and I think Jeff is still there for that?
We're not going anywhere.
Both of you are still there, okay. Thank you very much, Anthony. It's under, let's see, we're looking at E3E. It's under, let's see, looking at E., three E.
All right. Thank you very much. So, following up on the school impact fees, we're actually going ahead now to the 2019 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. These are, again, these are taking, these are performed every year by the city council, and originally, they were, city, city of Auburn adopted a growth management comprehensive plan in accordance with Washington State Growth Management Act in 1995, and every year since then, the Comprehensive Plan has been amended as, as applied or as changes have been identified. Most, in 2015, a complete overhaul of the Comprehensive Plan was achieved and approved by this, by the city council, and so, that's the plan that we're requesting update to Comprehensive Plan is kind of a framework, a roadmap to how the city acts, performs, and moves forward with it, with the services that we provide to our residents and businesses. And so, we seek to be consistent with the implementation and intent of the Comprehensive Plan, so as things change throughout our city, we naturally, we come back to make requests for changes in order to maintain, make sure that we're up to date and we're reflecting the most recent information and the most current best practices. There are two different, two different types of amendments that could be made to the Comprehensive Plan. First is a policy and text amendment, and the second is a map amendment. So, the, really, the only difference is the policy and text amendments are identified throughout the main body, and the maps are labeled as a map number, and then those can be changed effectively. Typically, they, they show a little bit more detailed information such as zoning, land use, and those are the things we'll be talking about today. In order to move forward with, with the application and receive applications from private applicants, we submit advertisements and through public notice in the newspaper, on the city website, and if there are any interested parties who have identified a need or an interest in submitting a private amendment, we reach out to them individually as well. So, we accepted amendments until June 7th of this year, and we are moving forward with one private amendment as well as nine city-initiated amendments. Before coming here, the city, the Planning Commission reviewed the public testimony and the binders that are before you. We spent two sessions, just largely due to the volume and the opportunity to fully digest and understand what is all in this big binder of stuff, and so, we had a public hearing on October, October 8th and November 6th to discuss these initiatives. The Planning Commission then made a recommendation, and spoiler alert, they recommended approval of all amendments, and now we're before you to request consideration of these amendments from the city council for adoption.
I see good one there.
In the, in the front part of your binder, under, before you get even to the staff reports and presentation, there is a docket identifying these, these text changes and map changes. That docket goes over some of the pros and cons and evaluation that we, that we go through after we determine which amendments to move forward with. And I'll briefly cover some of the policy and text amendments. One through, policy and text amendments, number one through five are capital facilities plans. So, one through four are the different school districts that they submit each year, and then policy text amendment number five is our annual comprehensive, capital facilities plan for the city of Auburn. Amendment number six is a, an amendment to the transportation element of the Comprehensive Plan. That incorporates new language that's required by state and federal, state and federal requirements to address Americans with Disabilities Act, mobility options. The amendment also updates capital projects that have been completed, updates the transportation improvement plan, transit information that's changed over the past five, four years, and another kind of big item is removing equestrian facilities. So, the responsibility for equestrian facilities has been removed from the transportation element and is now being identified through the Parks and Recreation Department. So, transportation has been coordinating closely with parks on that to make sure that the transition is smooth. They're evaluating, they're evaluating the changes and analyzing it, and if any changes are necessary to the, to the parks element of the Comprehensive Plan, we expect to move forward with those at a later date. Text amendment number seven is, it's a very minor change to amend the, one of the designated areas, it reads M Street Southeast, to identify M Street Southeast and Northeast, since the designated area encompasses parts of the city, both north and south of Main Street, so it's part of each of those address quadrants. Map amendment number one is a corresponding map change to that same text amendment in number seven. So, it's literally just adding a slash northeast in order to make it accurate with the, with the addresses and directional part of our street network. Comprehensive Plan Map Number Two is a city-initiated request to make a land use, change to the land use map and, land use designation map and the zoning map. So, those are, those are identified, it's parcelled down in the southeast part of the city, and I'll go into a little bit more information. I'll be able to touch on that a little bit more detail on a later slide. And the private initiated amendment that we received was from Auburn School District. They are moving forward with the acquisition of a site on Lee Hill and are moving forward requesting amendment to the land use, design, land use designation map and to the zoning map. And again, I have a little bit more detail on that, so we can get into some of those details. So, back to that amendment number two. So, there is a, I'll pop this up real quick. We're looking at an area southeast, southeast Auburn, across from the Auburn Adventist Academy, and zoom in a little bit better, just so you can get an idea of what is going on in the immediate area. And I've highlighted this green section to identify the part of this parcel which is requested to be changed. As we zoom into the land use portion, you see these kind of, it looks like three parcels that are highlighted. This is all the same parcel. So, the eastern two-thirds of the parcel is currently identified as an institutional land use, and it's also zoned for institutional, where the portion of the parcel west of Auburn Way is identified as single-family. So, as a part of this, of this request, we are requesting the land use designation changed from residential to institutional and simulta, at the same time, changing the zoning from R5 to institutional. This is to reflect a, an application or a permit that was issued earlier in the year for the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network, or PCERN, if you're familiar, if you're more familiar with the acronym, and they are building an emergency wireless communications tower on that site. So, that's, that's a, it's basically just to make the land use and zoning in accordance with what's actually happening, going on on the ground. The map amendment number three for the school district affects approximately 10 and a half acres on Lee Hill. And so, again, I've highlighted that section on the, on the northeast part of town. These red outlines, by the way, are just the city limits. This is my Google Earth map of the city. Zoom in. The parcel is surrounded by a single-family residential, and the current land use designation is single-family, and the current zoning is R5. Similar to the previous example, we, the applicant is requesting amending the land use designation from single-family to institutional and the zoning from R5 to institutional for the purposes of building an elementary school on the site. So, these are just, that's just a different map showing the zoning change, and as I mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission held public hearings on all of these items in October and November, and they left their meeting with a recommendation of approval of all 10 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. If you have any other questions or comments regarding the Comprehensive Plan Amendments, I'm happy to take those down.
Council members, yes. Council member Dick Wies.
Do you know if the Planning Commission had any significant responses from some of the residents on Lee Hill? As I've heard that there were some concerns where the schools being sited and traffic impacts and different things happening, and I'm not sure if it's a, a lot of residents, but there are some that have kind of raised some concerns over that location.
There was a little bit of discussion about that, but those are, those design issues are actually being worked out through the desire, or through the permit process. And so, there is a conversation with both our traffic engineers and the residents with the city, with the school district to ensure that the impact is, is mitigated to the extent that it's reasonable.
Council member Wales.
They have an excellent architect, who I'm sure will deal with the ingress and egress issues up there. But I'd tell you, if you go to Lee Hill or you go to Hazelwood, I haven't been to Arthur Jacobson recently, they're packed. They're so packed, and then right down by the sick temple, they're putting in a whole nother housing development. I mean, I would think that people are clamoring to have another neighborhood school up there. Yeah.
Any more questions, comments, council members? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To meet your request, moving forward to the second. Next up, we have ordinance sixty-seven forty-nine. It's three F. Jeff Tate.
Evening, council. Mayor Jeff Tate, Director of Community Development. Ordinance number sixty-seven forty-nine, which we are recommending for council consideration at the December 2nd council meeting, is what we would classify as an administrative code amendment. It is, over the years, we've been removing fees that are codified, fees that show up in the city ordinance into the fee schedule, which is adopted under resolution. So, what you see before you is a series of strike through to remove those fees. If council wants to move the ordinance forward for council consideration and action next week, you will see these fees carried forward into the fee resolution that will be before city council next week. So, you might, I didn't want it to be confusing that, that code amendment is proposed to strike fees without knowing that next week you would see it incorporated into a, the resolution. So, you'd be taking action on the ordinance and a resolution, one after the other, so these fees would just carry forward. And at that time, we're not proposing any changes. We're just moving the business license fees.
Yes. Council member Holm.
Thank you, Chair. This is a practice we've been working on for the last couple of years to continue the good work.
Any other comments or suggestions, questions? Thank you very much, Director Tate.
Thank you.
I'm moving forward.
You too. I don't even want, yeah.
Next up, we will be hearing about ordinance number sixty-seven thirty-one, and I think Amber Price.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, I'm Amber Price, Right-of-Way Specialist with Public Works Department. Franchise agreement number FRN nineteen dash zero zero one five, draft ordinance number sixty-seven thirty-one. It's first down broadband LLC, a telecommunications company, to have their telecommunications facilities that are currently in the right-of-way continue to remain there. The current franchise agreement under ordinance number sixty-five fifty-five is set to expire on March 20th, 2020, and allows for one renewal term of five years. Upon review of the current agreement, city staff and Astound both determined that the language still addresses both parties' needs, at this time with only minor amendments to update Astound's contact information and minor updates consistent with the city's current standard franchise language. These changes are shown on page one oh five through one oh eight of two seventy-five of your agenda packet. The current agreement requires that Astound obtain construction permits so that they can make repairs, upgrades, and improvements to the existing and future facilities. These permits are reviewed and managed through the city's permitting processes. A public hearing to consider the renewal and hear public comment is currently scheduled for December 2nd. Be happy to answer any questions.
You have any questions from council members?
Thank you.
You're off easy tonight. Thank you. Next up, we will be hearing about the ADA Transition Plan. Jacob? And Cecilia. Cecilia, how are you?
Good evening again. For the record, Cecile Malik, Senior Transportation Planner.
And I'm Jacob Sweeting, City Engineer.
And tonight, we're here to talk to you about the city's very first draft ADA Transition Plan for facilities in the public right-of-way. So, oh, that's okay. So, this plan has several elements. There is an overview and background, self-evaluation, and then some policies and procedures. We've, we've published this plan on the city's website in October, and it's open for public comments. If you follow the link on the slide, you can see the full plan and submit some comments, so you can also share with your friends and neighbors. It's been published in the paper for two weeks, and the information was sent to several groups that we identified. So, the city is committed to make the public right-of-way accessible. In the development of the plan, staff researched census data and found that about 11% of Auburn's residents identified to have a disability. So, the goals of this plan is to evaluate the assets, document and develop policies, and plan for ADA compliance. So, the drivers for this transition plan are some federal requirements, the American Disability Act of 1990, which prohibits discrimination in employment, state and local government, public accommodations, transportation, and telecommunications, and more particularly Title II of the ADA, which addresses non-discrimination in all programs, activities, and services of public entities, to include state and local government. So, the first step of this plan and, and a large portion of the work of this plan is a self-evaluation, and, and that's to look at the city's assets to evaluate the level of compliance with the American Disability Act. So, we have looked at the curb ramps, the signalized and enhanced pedestrian crossings and the sidewalks, and this is a section that will be updated annually so that we can keep track of the progress towards full compliance.
So, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about these evaluation criteria. The first that Cecile mentioned were curb ramps. And curb ramps you see all over downtown, all over the city, and they are- And curb ramps you see all over downtown, all over the city, and they are intended to provide a transition from the raised sidewalk to the roadway surface where you have a pedestrian crossing. So here's a picture of one, actually just right outside here. And the elements to determine if a curb ramp is compliant consist of a few different pieces. The first part are the ramp slopes. The slopes need to be at a certain, they can't be too steep, or they'd be hard to traverse, and there's a few different criteria that go into those ramp slopes, intended to help accommodate that wheelchair that's going to try to go up and down those ramps. The next piece is a landing area. So once you get to the top of the ramp, you need an area where you can transition, you can change directions, you can move, so there's some criteria that goes into what that landing area, that level landing area needs to be as well. And then at the bottom of the ramp is actually a detectable warning area, which is not for the wheelchair users, but is actually for the blind or visually impaired pedestrians that gives them a visual, actually, it's a, it's an audio cue that they would use with their walking stick to let them know that they are leaving the sidewalk and heading into the, into the vehicle path. In two thousand sixteen, we did a full inventory of all the curbs in the city, and we found that we have six hundred and thirty-three compliant, fully compliant curb ramps. We have about two one-five-hundred ramps that, there's actually a ramp there, but there's at least one deficiency with that ramp, and that could be everything from missing a truncated dome, which are those yellow patterns that, that we saw in the last picture, to maybe one of the slopes on the ramps is just slightly too steep. And then we have about two hundred and seven curbs where there are, there is no ramp. These numbers have been changing. Every year, we probably install at least forty to fifty curb ramps, sometimes more, sometimes less, just depending on the amount of development going on that triggers the ramps, or capital projects that actually installed it.
A question. Do we ever find new curbs without ramps? Do they get built without ramps?
Brand-new ones?
Yes.
It's, if a curb is built without a ramp now, it's because we are actually physically closing that pedestrian crossing, so we will have signage up saying, "Do not cross here." But generally speaking, if there's a, if there is a crossing, then there needs to be a ramp, unless we close it.
It's not adding to our backlog.
No, everything new, but everything that is built now is required to be.
Yes.
So Jacob, the twenty-five-hundred, they have at least one deficiency. Do you know what percentage of those may have been fairly new ramps that need some more work on them, or?
Well, I mean, most of the newer ramps are compliant. There are slight changes that do occur to the interpretation of the ADA rules, and one of the more recent was, one of the more recent changes was the addition of the truncated domes or the detectable warning surface. It used to be that that was simply just a graded kind of surface to provide some traction for the wheelchairs, so a lot of them had to do with that change that was made several years ago.
Is that, I mean, that, is that a fairly simple repair to put one of those truncated domes down?
It used to be. It used to be that we could put a mat down. You can see some of those starting to come up here and there, but now the requirement is that it's a very particular sound and pitch that that, that the walking stick actually hits and makes a ping, and so it's, to put those in, it pretty much means rebuilding the ramp. It's a little more complex. So we have curb ramps. Another thing that we look at and evaluate for the ADA compliance in the right-of-way are actual ped crossings, pedestrian crossings. We have different types. We have pedestrian crossings that are our full traffic signals. We have pedestrian crossings of the roadway that are at signals that are just for pedestrians only and aren't for vehicles. And then we also have enhanced crossings, which have, historically would have the flashing beacons. Now they've progressed to be the rapid flashing, the RFBs they call them. You see them on our way south, we just saw a new one on Auburn Avenue installed. So with these pedestrian crossings, there's a few different criteria that we look at to see if they're meeting ADA requirements. Not all of them are listed here, but these are some of the, some of the more common ones I wanted to highlight tonight. One is the actual pedestrian signal head, we call it, so that is shown there in the red circle, and these have to be mounted at a certain height, they have to be a certain size, they have to be visible, and in recent years, we've added the countdown to it that provides some accessibility to it as well. And, oh, there we go. The second big part of a pedestrian crossing that has some sort of signalized component to it would be the actual push buttons themselves. The push button is what tells the signal that there's a pedestrian waiting to cross, or in the case of the RFB, it actually triggers the flashing of lights simultaneous to be in push. But those ped push buttons have two main features that make them ADA compliant. They're either, they're in the right location and they have the right functions. So for location, they have to be located close to the landing area that we talked about earlier, at the top of the ramp, they have to be reachable, a certain height, and then also a certain distance from that landing area, which is shown here. And then the function of the buttons themselves is important and actually has changed throughout the years, and probably will continue to change, but the new pedestrian buttons shown on the right have a few different features to it. One, you see an arrow on it where if you're hard of, if you are visually impaired, you can actually feel that button, and it will be pointing in the direction of travel that you'll be heading when you cross out into the roadway, as well as there's an audible that'll actually tell you to wait, and it'll tell you which roadway you're waiting to cross, and when it's, when it's, you have a green light, a green light and are cleared to cross, it'll change and say, "Go ahead and walk across that roadway." And then, of course, it's got the red light to trigger that it's actually, and knows that you're there. And then the instructions also are readable and braille, so a lot of components that go on there, as well as that button actually vibrates a little bit, so you know when you touch it that it's, it's, it's heard your call. So you'll see many of those new buttons out there, and you'll see some of the old ones as well, so part of the transition plan is upgrading those to be the new function and be in the right location.
Council member Trump.
How many of those thirteen fast flashing, the RFB, how do we determine where to put those at? You have thirteen, we have thirteen of them, and how do we determine to put them there? Is there a lot of them?
Well, it starts with finding a crossing where we think we need some enhancement, some additional warning besides what might be out there, crosswalk markings, the signage. It would be typically on an uncontrolled crossing where you have traffic that doesn't have a signal, a red light signal, or an actual stop sign to cross. So other than that, you're just looking for areas that need some of that enhanced treatment, need some extra visual cues that are away from an actual stop sign or a controlled intersection. And the third part of the self-evaluation focuses on our sidewalks. And the sidewalks themselves, for the criteria to determine if the sidewalks meet ADA requirements, you have slopes, cross slopes, and longitudinal slopes of the sidewalks. The width, to make sure you have an overall passing width for wheelchairs and others to be able to move freely through the sidewalk, and then looking for encroachments to the sidewalk. You want your streetlights and your street furnitures, like vennishes or landscape features like street trees, to be outside of that, that width or that passable area. Now, those last two that we looked at, the sidewalks and the pedestrian push button location and functions, we are planning to complete an inventory of those now. We have some idea of where we're at, but this summer, we're hoping to get out there and do a full inventory like we did on those ramps, to get a better picture of where we're at on those. So the next piece of the ADA transition plan is a summary of policies related to ADA compliance. The plan summarizes existing policies that are already in the books. Those reside in the city's transportation comprehensive plan, as well as the city code and the engineering, design, and construction standards. A lot of those we've talked to council about. We've talked about half-street requirements, so triggers when developers come and build a project and need to build public improvements. A lot of times, those public improvements start with saying, "Is the right-of-way in front of your development ADA compliant?" And working to see which, which facilities need to be upgraded if they are not compliant. There's also some criteria that's established for upgrading and installing those pedestrian push buttons as well in the engineering design standards. The ADA transition plan also documents some new policies that aren't currently anywhere else in the books. So some of these policies that are in the document include an exemption for minor pavement maintenance activities. This would be for filling potholes, or filling some of the cracks in the pavement. We clarify with this document that those types of maintenance activities don't trigger upgrading any adjacent ADA facilities. We also establish a policy, are proposing a policy, that roadway or utility work out in a roadway that doesn't currently have sidewalks wouldn't in itself cause that same project to have to build those sidewalks. So if we go out and replace a water main, it doesn't mean that we necessarily have to go out and put sidewalks along a roadway where there are not currently sidewalks. And then there's additional criteria related to those, those push buttons that's, gets a little, in more detail than what's in the current design standards. And then the last part of the ADA transition plan is actually what the plan is. So we talked about the evaluation, what do we currently have out there that needs to be upgraded, and then we talked about some of the policies that we have or will adopt with this. The third part talks about how, how do we actually achieve ADA compliance, and it really lies in, like we mentioned before, capital improvement projects. We have funds allocated by you in the city budget for addressing ADA compliance issues. This, it's not a lot, it's not enough, but it does make some progress towards compliance. Private development projects. You see downtown projects happening all over, and they will be helping us to achieve our ADA goals because they'll be replacing ramps, they'll be replacing sidewalks, and in some cases, traffic signals to help meet ADA requirements. We also have franchise and third-party work out in the right-of-way. So if PSE, Puget Sound Energy, comes and replaces an underground gas main like they have in the recent years up in the Lakethan Hills area, and that restoration work requires at least half that pedestrian pathway to be replaced, they also upgrade the adjacent ramps. That is one of those policies that's been established in discussions with council in those engineering design standards that I mentioned before. A couple other pieces that are in the plan are, is a discussion about interim accommodations. So what do we have in place until we have this full accommodation to meet the needs of our citizens that might need those accommodations now? First thing we have is we have availabilities. We get, we get a phone call and a resident says, "Hey, I, I need some accommodations for my on-street parking." And we'll go out there and we'll meet with the resident and see what accommodations they need. Sometimes this leads to actually establishing an on-street handicap parking spot and other ways that they can get to and from their, their residents from the public right-of-way. We also hear from our public when they actually have a pathway that they think is obstructed, and we will go out and work with them to eliminate some of those ADA obstructions specifically for that complaint. And then finally, we are working to, the document itself actually talks about how we develop our projects, how we prioritize different types of ADA compliance issues in different locations for ADA compliance, and how we work that in our capital programs, and it's, and really, the top of that list is where we have specific complaints or issues about non-compliance that impacts a specific citizen. We will go out there and try to prioritize addressing that as quickly as we can. And then finally, the document talks about, it's not shown on the slide, but the document talks about some of the challenges that we have in meeting ADA compliance. We have a lot of facilities that don't meet current requirements, and it's going to take a lot of funding and some time to actually get there and have full compliance. Our facilities span across the valley where it's very flat, all the way up on both, both hillsides, where those slopes make it difficult to meet some of those curb ramp and other criteria that we talked about. Along with the challenges that we have with the plan in coordinating our facilities that span across our borders, so we are bordered by several cities, by an Indian tribe, and we have to coordinate and work with them to have facilities that can span those borders to, to make ADA compliance continuous. So Cecilia will talk about the next steps.
So the next steps in the process, so we have the public comments that we're waiting for until the end of December. So the ADA transition plan will remain on the website, and there is the page where anyone can go and submit public comments at any time, but any comment that will be received before January thirty-first will be addressed and documented, and if changes are necessary, then there will be changes made to the plan. And so I will revise the draft. In February, we'll bring the new policies to you in the council for adoption and publish the plan. And each year, we will compile new data and document it in the plan so that we can have a documentation of the progress that we make toward compliance.
Council, have any questions? Yes.
Council member Decorsy.
You've had the briefing tonight, and since we have a council transition in January, are you going to be coming back before February to kind of revisit this with us and council members?
Yes, there will be a discussion before we'll bring the resolution for adoption.
Any other questions from council? Comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate you doing this work. Is everybody okay to continue? Or do we need a break? Let's take a five-minute break. Come back at seven o'clock. All right.
Yes. Sorry, he's awesome. I appreciate it.
Yes.
Shoulder, not too bad.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Hi, Mal. Oh, yeah. I love Cleveland. It doesn't work. They, they wait so long. Exactly. One of the things they've done to revive, rather than plus line, it's like. I have, you know. Yep, but you actually got to talk to them. Joyce, every time I call, he's taking a nap. He's resting. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
So, you know what I had so much... You know what I had so much fun at the expo? We had these adult toys.
Oh, hey, was that like diapers?
Oh, my God. These, no, these outdoor toys. You get on this, there's four titty totters that you sit on, and it's... I didn't get on it, but I wa... No, I did. I watched everybody else get on it, and it was so funny. I go, "I... I get you to just bring one of those," and also those two bar. Pull yourself up. It was so much fun. I just want to know.
Used to have them at game parks. They got destroyed. They have the little section.
I think we ought to put it at Pete's fishing place.
No, definitely not there.
We're going to get started here, council members.
Yeah, he does. He can't wait until he's out there. He said he's going to be another Virginia Hoggins.
I thought you were practicing for after the first of the year, John.
I was going to. I don't need much practice, though. I've had eight years of observation.
We're going to call in Virginia.
All right. Well, we're ready to get started on the next agenda item, and we already have Jamie up front here, ready to talk to us about the third quarter financial report.
Councilwoman Mayor, I'm Jamie Thomas, Finance Department, and I'm here to go over our third quarter financial report, and just looking at our budget to actuals particularly as it relates to the general fund. So, starting off, this is a chart of our budget to actual general fund revenues by revenue type, year-to-date. So, this is through September 30th, 2019. We have collected $52.3 million, and our budget is, for year-to-date, is $50.6 million. So, we are ahead by $1.7 million year-to-date. I am not going... I don't plan to go over every revenue source tonight. I'm going to hit the highlights. So, the big revenue sources with large variances and the revenue sources that actually have the biggest financial impact on the city as far as economic indicators go. So, I'll talk about sales tax, utility tax, other taxes, and then license permits and fees. So, first up is sales tax. We are... We have collected year-to-date $12.8 million, which is $284,000, or 2.1% greater than our year-to-date 2018, and we are 1.1% ahead, or $148,000 ahead of actually our year-to-date budget. Pretty moderate... Since 2014, we've had one year where we had a pretty significant jump, or moderate jump of six, a little over 6%, from 2017 to 2018. But really, the increase that we're seeing so far in 2019 is pretty consistent with the prior year increases year-over-year in sales tax. This year, the categories that are contributing most to the large increase in sales tax is the retail and services category. Specifically, within retail, sporting goods, hobby, and other miscellaneous retailers are contributing to a large increase. And then, within the services category, our food services, supplies, and information services sectors are high performers, and they have actually contributed, those two, both retail and services sector, there's a $461,000 increase over year-to-date 2018. That's off, being offset by our construction sector, which is down by $257,000 year-to-date. So, utility taxes, this is one of our bigger categories. It's a little bit... It's more cyclical. It changes from year to year, weather-dependent, a lot of times when you're talking electric and natural gas. Utility taxes that we collect, I may point this one out because it is a pretty significant total source fund for the city, and we are trending down, a little bit under year-to-date compared to our budget as well as compared to 2018. Our city utilities, which our year-to-date budget is $3 million, we're right on track, which is what we expect because we set our own rates and we levy our own tax against our city utilities. It's our external utilities that are downward trending at $226,000 or almost $227,000 less than budget. The particular utilities that are underperforming is the telephone tax collections, where $157, $159,000 under budget year-to-date. Electric and cable are also just slightly under, which is being offset a little bit by our external garbage tax revenues that we've collected. So, there's some that are higher, some that are lower, but in the end, it's really that telephone tax collections that are driving the under. So, then, the other tax category, there's several different tax types in here. Really, there's two that stand out particularly. There's the sales tax annexation credit. We've collected $373,000 this year, and as you can see, we actually have no budget for that. And that's because our sales tax annexation credit sunsetted in 2018, and so, we budgeted for all of the revenue that we should have collected in 2018 and the 10 years prior. And we did not receive our last payment, our last payment from DOR in 2018, the last payment that was due to us. We had budgeted for it in 2018. We had earned it in 2018. We did not receive it actually until third quarter of 2019. So, that is why it's skewing our other taxes category up, but we are happy to take what is due to us. And then, the other is the criminal justice sales tax. This is tied to our sales tax activity within the city. It's an extra 0.1% levied on sales within the city for criminal justice purposes. And then, going into licenses, permits, and fees, I grouped this a little bit differently than we have in the past. I brought in development service fees, which is normally, you would normally see under the services category with our public safety service fees as well as our general government service fees. I pulled development services in because this is so closely linked to our community development activity as well as building permits and all of our fees associated with, that we charge developers. So, I thought it was more indicative of the activity that is taking place with building permits and other licenses and permits. So, overall, we're actually performing $296,000 above budget year-to-date. Building permits is actually pulling the whole group down a little bit. We're $286,000 under our year-to-date budgeted projections. However, our actual volume, our actual building permit volume is up by 1%. So, it's just the dollar value of those building permits that we're issuing. Again, that's more cyclical, what, when, the timing, when large development comes in and when those permits are air-paid.
Councilmember Wales.
I think that with all these new schools, you know, new Olympic, and we're in the middle of a new Nick Scobie, that just the size of those projects alone have a positive impact on building permits, but you're saying that not enough.
It depends on the timing when those permits were applied for. If they're in the middle of construction now, there's a good chance that those permits were actually pulled in prior years. And that may be, 2018 may be higher just because of if they were paid in 2018 or prior. So, makes this year's numbers look even better. And then, for other licenses and permits, this is, these are grading permits, these are excavation permits. We're up $328,000, and that's attributed to one, grading permits for Huntington Woods, as well as really, the biggest driver in this $328,000 is the new cost recovery model that went into place in 20, at the beginning of 2019 for our excavation permits. So, this was the city looking more closely again at the cost of services and trying to get a better cost recovery model on the fees. Then, the other category, development services fees, these are plan check fees, facility extension fees, zoning and subdivision fees, and we're over year-to-date budget $264,000, so we're doing well there. And that is attributed to several large development projects that, as well, plan check fees for several large development projects, and then, also, the cost recovery model changes and the fee schedule changes associated with that cost recovery model. And REITs, even though this is not a general fund revenue, we record this in a special revenue fund, it's always really interesting because our capital projects rely so heavily on refunding. It's restricted to certain general governmental capital projects and renovations and acquisitions, and we're actually trending up. We're doing pretty well so far for 2019. There's been a lot of real estate excise sales, real estate excise tax activity taking place. We have collected three, almost $3.2 million so far year-to-date, and our year-to-date budget is $1.9 million. So, we're doing pretty well in that category. So, that is it with the significant revenues. I was going to just touch base really quick on our general fund expenditures. So, here, it's hard to read because public safety is skewed so much higher than all the other departments, but important to note that all the departments are, have underspent their budget so far, so we're right on track, actually under, so we're doing to the city's favor. We have spent $51.9 million year-to-date, and our budget year-to-date is $57.4 million. So, we are underspent by $5.4 million. It is important to note that part of the reason why that public safety category is underspent so much is that there was a timing difference in when we received and paid our SCORE and ValleyCom payments to the amount of $1.4 million. So, that $1.4 million actually would have been originally factored into, but been paid in the year-to-date budget. So, it pulls down our year-to-date savings a little bit, but we're still going to end the year... We're on track to end the year favorably on our expenditures. And then, with that...
Councilmembers, any questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember Holden.
Just one. I'm looking at the chart right at the beginning, general fund revenues versus expenditures through the third quarter. We're spending less than budgeted, and we're making more than budgeted. Gold star.
We should have her circulate around and shake her head. Nice job.
Would you like to present yourself?
Well, I... I'm just the bearer of good news. I don't deserve any of the credit.
Thank you.
We'd probably get the blame if it was bad.
Probably.
Thank you very much, and I think you're up for the next presentation as well.
I'm up next, yeah.
For ordinance 6751, authorizing amendments to the Auburn City Council for the 2019-2020
So, similar to what I had done at the last study session, I'm actually combining item to items. So, this will be, I've combined items J and K on the agenda. This will be the 2019 year-end budget adjustment as well as the 2020 mid-bioennial budget adjustment, also known as budget adjustment number four, and budget adjustment number five. I'm reviewing the calendar. This is the same calendar that I had shown you at our last study session. We've, the great areas are our actions that we've already done. We've already reviewed the property tax. We've already done our first pass at the mid-bioennial budget amendment, and the council adopted the property tax ordinance at the meeting on 11/18. So, today, ordinance 6752, which is budget amendment number four, and ordinance 6751, which is budget adjustment number five. I'll briefly just touch base that, with that one more time, one more pass. Next week, we will have the public hearing on the mid-bioennial budget amendment, and then, hopefully, the subsequent adoption of both of those budget amendments, ordinance 6752 and 6751. So, jumping right in, just for the purposes of timing and then, a calendar timing, I'll start with the 2019 year-end budget adjustment. This is a comprehensive list of all the changes that we're proposing for the year-end budget adjustment and budget adjustment number four. Most of these items really have a zero net impact. So, in a lot of these cases, we're just recognizing new program revenues and program expenditures for those revenues. I'll point out a couple of them. The second one, which is the King County Veterans Seniors and Human Services grant, that is a grant that the council had actually just accepted recently. There's no net impact on the budget, but there will, we do have in the budget to hire 1.5 FTEs, which will be offset and paid for by grant revenue. The King County District Court Services, this has an impact of $109,150. Every year, the King County Superior Court does a reconciliation of the court services that they've provided compared to what we had, what were estimated and what we had paid, and the total bill for their 2018 reconciliation ended up being a little bit more than what we had planned in the 2019 budget. So, this is just to true up those court services, those court services that we receive from King County. The next one is adjusting the terms of a promissory note. This was, just to adjust, an agreement that we have with, a promissory note that we have. We're extending a balloon payment out over several years just to ensure that we get, continue to get consistent and timely payments with the grantee. Then, the next one, we've got, so there's a couple, there's a couple of items on both the A Street federal grants. This is a positive impact to our, to our fund balance. This is just recognizing new grant revenue that we hadn't originally budgeted for, which would be freeing up fund balance, which had originally been budgeted to be used for those projects. Then, we have moving down to the City Light LED conversion grant. The total grant we received, if you're reading through the agenda packet, is actually a $500,000 grant. The reason you only see $200,000 here is because that's the net impact. We'd originally budgeted for a $300,000 grant. We ended up coming back and getting a $500,000 grant. This is to adjust the additional revenue and then, the additional work that we'll be able to do on the capital project side. You'll also see the $650,000 transferred out of the special revenue fund for the acquisition of the Auburn Avenue Theater. And then, the last big one is the, the very last one, the to replace two caseback hoes. They're fully funded for $315,400. These are fully funded replacements. They're at the night, they're on nine years, and they're well past their useful life. This is a summary of those amendments on the fund balance for both the general fund as well as the, all the other funds and then, all city funds as a whole. This is just re, creates a slight adjustment down for both the general fund and then, all of the other funds, $284,000 less in fund balance for the general fund and $302,000 less for all of those other funds. So, we'll have a total ending fund balance citywide of $116.8 million. So, then, that takes us back into budget adjustment number five. We've reviewed all, we've reviewed most all of this. Again, just to review that there's really, just, there's a few different things that the budget amendment number five does. We're realigning our significant revenue sources based on updated information that we have today. We're adopting the continuation of previously approved requests that were made in 2019 and carrying them into the 2020 budget. We're adjusting our capital project budgets. We're adding in a few new program requests, and then, we're adjusting our beginning, our 2020 beginning fund balances with all of the our 2020 beginning fund balances with all of the changes that had originally been adopted in 2019. I don't wanna, don't wanna spend too much of your time going over this, we've already talked about that this is the $1.4 million increasing, adjusting our property tax revenue estimates, our business license fees, our permit fees, as well as the extension of the, of the streamlined sales tax mitigation by the state legislature for $925,000. Last time, it, it comes out so much smaller on, on the screen, this is a list of all of the adjustments, these are, again, all in the agenda packet, last time we spent, I spent time just looking at the general fund impacts, most, again, a lot of these have either, most, everything else on this list is capital in nature, so it's just realigning the timing of capital projects, either moving them ahead in schedule or moving funds from one project to another, so if it has capital decks to it, it's just the realignment of those capital projects, and then we have a couple of other new projects, we talked a little bit about the $103,800 for, for equipment replacement of those golf, of the 24 golf carts last two weeks ago, and then bringing in the, the skip program into recognizing the city as a fiscal agent for the skip program, and the cost, the revenue that we receive from the partner agencies and then the costs associated with being the fiscal agent. The impact then on the 2020 ending fund balances with the budget adjustment five is, we talked about this last time, it's actually with the realignment of those 2020 ending fund balance, the beginning fund balance for 2020 actually bumps up our general fund balance, our general fund balance estimate to $11.3 million compared to the original budget of $7 million, and then an increase of $1.3 million to all other funds. Now, I do wanna point out, because that does look good and positive, but I do wanna point out that we're ending, we're projected to end 2019 with a fund balance of $14.9 million, so even though our adjustments make 2020 a little bit better than we had originally estimated, there is still a pretty steep decline in ending fund balance between 2019 and 2020, so it's about a $3.6 million decrease between the 2019 ending fund balance and the 2020 fund balance, so, better than it was originally, but it's, that's still a very steep decline for the general fund, ending fund balance in one year. So the next steps, again, we have a public hearing on the city council's agenda for next week for the mid-biennial budget amendment, and then we subsequently be adopting the budget amendment four and budget amendment five. Any questions?
Any questions, council members? Comments? Thank you very much, all right. Next up is Resolution 5463, authorizing the mayor to execute amendments to certain Auburn municipal airport land leases relating to the implementation of the 2020 fair market value lease rate adjustment.
Leading the council, John Char, Economic Development Division.
Tim Misoni, the airport manager.
So, we have six land leases that are subject to fair market value adjustments here coming up in the 2020 term, so just a quick reminder, the fair market value gets adjusted based upon an MAI appraisal that gets done in the calendar years ending in nine and in the four with implementation for calendar year, excuse me, calendar year, term years ending in five and zero, so, coming up here with the 2020 term, we just had the appraisal, got it back, the appraisal came back dated September 30th, 2019, with a fair market value rate of 82 and a half cents per foot. This represents roughly 36% increase from the 2019 rates, so what rates are today. With that being a fairly large increase, you can imagine the, the significant impact that that's gonna have on the individual condo units, because it's the condo units and their associations that make up the majority of those land leases. So just to provide a little bit of context, best I can figure, that's gonna have roughly an impact of about $76 per month to individual tenants, so again, quite, quite significant. So, what we're here to do is, is to propose a step increase to that, that, that amount, so rather than that full amount going to the 82 and a half cents beginning January 1 of 2020, what we're proposing is that, that we take it, essentially, we split the difference between that 82 and a half cents and what the, what the current rate is, so rather than, than that increase being the full 36%, it would be roughly 17%, so, again, just estimating the, the cost impact to be about half of that number that I just, just presented to you. So with that, obviously, we wanted to take a look at, at how that would affect, if, if at all, the, the airport, airport's operational budget, and speaking with, with Tim and Ingrid, even with implementing this, this proposed addendum, this step increase, it's still, the rate, the rate increase with the implementation proposed is still greater than the rate increase forecast that the airport used for its 2020 operational budget. So implementing this will not have a negative impact on, on the operational, the original operational budget, so, that's what I have, Tim, do you have anything to add?
Just, councilmember...
Wales.
Wales, thank you. It's only been two years.
So, you look at this, on the years that end in zero and in five?
Yeah, so, the, the fair market value, each lease calls for those to, to be implemented every five years.
So do you plan on, I, I certainly support the 17 cents, as opposed to, or, you know, cutting it...
Seventy percent.
Yeah, the 17%. You don't propose that midway through the next five years, we increase it another 17%?
So, what, what we're proposing is the, the increase of the 17% would happen beginning in 2021, or, excuse me, 2020, and then the remaining 17% would be imposed in 2021.
A one-year delay.
Yes, exactly. So we're, we will still realize, we will still realize the, the full market value based upon the appraisal, we're just trying to reduce the...
The impact, yes. I just, I think that, I feel comfortable with the 17%, and then we look at it again before we do the next one, because I, I don't wanna drive away tenants.
So, I did speak to all of our tenants, and while they, they didn't like the sticker shock, so to speak, they did appreciate our approach, and they did sign, all six of these, all six of them did sign the addenda and agreed to the addenda if the council supports this.
So they don't have a problem with the increase in 2020, oh, excuse me, in 2020 and then in 2021, the other half?
Correct, and, and what we typically, what we do is, we get the appraised rate and then do CPI the remaining four years, we will not be doing the CPI the first two years, we'll do the, get to the rate and then CPI.
Okay, great, I just don't wanna lose tenants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I should have pointed to that we are compared to other airports, we still are comparative, we're not low, but for the Seattle area, we're...
More than reasonable.
Yes, that's what the appraisal does.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Next, we have Resolution 5474, I think that's, that's presenting to us. It's endorsing the Sound Cities Association 2020 legislative agenda.
Okay, council, mayor, thank you for having me, I have two legislative things in front of you tonight, one is from Sound Cities Association, that one is a bit time-sensitive, Sound Cities Association will be voting on these legislative priorities next month, I think in just a couple of weeks, Councilmember Holman actually attended the, the latest session for what you see in front of you for the Sound Cities Association legislative priorities, and you can see there, there are five of them, the first one addressing transportation and infrastructure and mobility, the next one on the Public Works Trust Fund, which is a, is pretty much on everybody's legislative agenda most years, preserving, the preservation of local decision-making authority, providing tools for cities to address local priorities, and addressing the affordable housing and homelessness crisis. I would defer to Councilmember Holman on some specifics around these if there are, if there are any questions, but we do have a resolution drafted for this body to endorse these, and in turn allow for a, a vote from Auburn to Sound Cities Association on these priorities.
Councilmember Holman, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, this is a very close addition, revised addition to 2019, it's pretty much the same thing, little bit of the language has been modernized, and it is something that the Public Issues Committee is tentatively endorsing until they get the support of their full councils.
Mr. Henman, do you have anything else that you wanna?
On the SCA priorities, no.
Okay. I guess we can proceed to the bottom. Do you, yes. How you doing?
Just one, one quick comment, I'm really pleased to see the agenda include the expansion of the Housing Trust Fund, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board is doing it right now, and Michelle Thomas has informed us that in the short session next year, one of the key items is continuing looking at preservation of affordable housing, there's going to be an ask for an additional $10 million in the Housing Trust Fund in the short session, I'm not sure if it'll be successful or not, but, I mean, one of the things we need to focus in on is to continue, not only to push for the investment in the Housing Trust Fund at an adequate level, but to also include the preservation portion in that as well, because sometimes that's lost in the nervous.
All right.
All right.
You can proceed.
Thank you, so on Monday, we will have that resolution in front of you all for your consideration, so, thank you. And the next one on your agenda is the City of Auburn State and Federal Priorities, I realized as I was going through the agenda before coming down, it did not look as if the, that our priorities made it into your packet, so I did print those out and handed them out to you at the break, this is not as time-sensitive, so I wanted to make sure that you had enough time to read them over and deliberate, and I will look to you all as to whether or not you would like to see this on Monday's agenda, or if you need a little bit more time to digest what we put in front of you. What I would like to do just real quickly is just kinda give you some highlights of the 2019 session, and, so you can kind of, I did, I put this in a weekly roundup earlier this year, once the bills had been officially signed off by the governor, but some of the things that were on our priority list last year, I felt like we had a really good session last year, of course, streamlined sales tax mitigation was high on our list, and they did pass House Bill 1109 that put mitigation funds, continued mitigation funds for streamlined sales tax in the budget for us, so that is secure for the moment. Last year, we had condo law reform on there as part of our efforts towards providing more affordable housing for our communities, this was something that was recommended by master builders and a lot of other advocacy organizations as well, and we're very pleased that the legislature passed Senate Bill 5334 that offered many reforms on condo laws, so hopefully we'll see more inventory in our communities again. We did have some desire to continue to strengthen the State Public Records Act, this is something that has become onerous for many cities, and we will continue to look for more strengthening of that law, more really just sort of catching up to the times, as many cities have a very difficult time fulfilling public records as to just the sheer volume. So the legislature did pass House Bill 1667 that had many things in there to strengthen that, that law. One of our big, big wins this year is we made an ask for the Auburn Arts and Culture Center, and we're allocated almost half a million dollars in the capital budget for that, a lot of work done by a lot of staff members, our Parks Department, our consultants had us in front of quite a lot of people and helped us craft our message to the legislature to ensure that stayed in the budget for us. Of course, we wanted to ensure that SCORE reimbursements were, were, yes, were a little bit more commensurate to especially what the Department of Corrections was using that facility for, and there was money put in the operating budget as well for the jail reimbursements from the DOC tenants in the SCORE facility. The Basic Law Enforcement Academy funding, that also passed in the operating budget, so there was a little bit more money put in for that to offer more slots so that we can more quickly get our officers out into, out onto the streets to get them through the academy. Senate Bill 5383 addressed some tiny houses and ADUs for, again, addressing the, the housing shortage, so we were, we were pleased with that. There was quite a number of social agenda funds that were also put in the capital budget that we were very pleased about, not coming directly to us, but coming to, into Auburn. Health Point received just over a million dollars, MultiCare received $20 million for a mixed-use psychiatric care facility that they are still deliberating on, Nexus Youth and Family got just over a half a million dollars for some of their projects, and then overall, the $150 million statewide for community-based behavioral health investments that we were advocating for and looking at, and we're very glad that they, they passed. There were some infrastructure investments made by the legislature last year, sadly, Public Works Trust Fund was not fully funded, and like I say, that's something that everybody advocates for. The SR167509 Gateway Projects were funded, and there is some effort around that, but with the passage of certain legislation, we're looking closely to make sure that stays funded. There was some transportation funding things that happened, we kind of stayed neutral on some of those things, but we didn't see a ton of improvement for, for local funding for transportation, and the SR18167 interchange, there was no action on this item, so it didn't move, so we'll continue looking at that. So, last year's session, like I said, we were, we're generally pretty happy with it to see, see a lot of things go forward, and then moving into our 2020 priorities, this session, as you know, is a short session, it will be a 60-day session, so there's not a lot of things that move, but there are quite a number of things that we will be looking to set the stage... quite a number of things that we will be looking to set the stage for anyway, for possibly 2021 in their next budget year. But of course, as you all know, we like to make sure we're engaging with our legislators and their staff to keep Auburn's priorities top of mind. So as you can see in what I handed out to you, we have some issues in public safety that we will be tracking in this session and communicating with our legislature about. And these were put together with our department directors, the mayor, some other key staff members, and our consultants in the last several months. I won't necessarily read these for you word to word, because you just got them tonight. We have quite a number of things that we would like to advocate for with our regulatory and land use legislation that could be helpful to us around impact fees and affordable housing, and some regulatory reform things that sometimes make processes a little bit difficult. Moving into public works, transportation, and infrastructure, that is a long list of things, but we give you this level of detail so you can just kind of see where we're thinking, what we're thinking about, and some of the things that we are working towards. Parks and open spaces, we will likely be continuing to look for more direct funding for some things. Darrell called out a couple of things on the Jacobson Tree Farm, the Arts and Culture Building, perhaps looking at some more preservation funds around that. We will always keep our eye on SST and the jail costs, and ensure that those things do stay funded so we stay whole. And at the state level, of course, probably our main social services issue will be our Consolidated Resource Center that we've been working on, and we will continue to advocate for direct funding from the state on that. At the federal level, going into 2020 could be challenging, as it is an election year, presidential election year, but we will still keep talking and pushing and fighting for things that are important to Auburn. As you well know, cybersecurity is a really important thing, as we have seen even a lot of our neighboring cities, and even one of our main social service agencies get attacked by malware and ransomware. And cities and governments continue to be targets, and we will look to our state and federal partners to see how we can continue to strengthen our cybersecurity. Homelessness and housing, as you all know, there are some federal things that we can and should look at and make the request of our delegation, that the grant funding for the preservation of our low-income housing and our facility stock is important. There are programs out there that we will continue to be involved in and look to. Our Resource Center, we will also seek possible direct funding for as well, and some of the larger things around mental health, and our parks and public safety. Cable and telecom, we've all talked about some of the issues around removing local control, especially with the 5G networks and how some deregulation could affect our ability to have local control and be compensated for the use of our right-of-way in those areas. And some of the key transportation projects that we have been looking at and seeking federal funding for, they're on the last page, around Auburn Way South and Lee Hill, a couple of projects that we've had in front of DOT at the federal level, trying to find some local funding there. And then lastly, the federal transportation bill reauthorization, we need Congress to pass that, and hopefully, that will happen.
Excellent. Councilmember Wales.
Thank you. Dana, how would you like feedback? Would you prefer that we send it to you in writing, or what would be your?
Happy to take feedback here, or if there's other things as you kind of delve into this more?
I'm mostly concerned about our state legislative priorities. I'd like to see under public safety, even if it is redundant, I would like to see you put in there SCORE funding someplace. That's where people expect to see it, and it's pretty major. Also, under public safety, the last bullet there, I think that it can be maybe phrased so that it doesn't look like we're pointing fingers at other municipalities, but I do believe that we need to protect their rights, but I think we can phrase it in, but otherwise, I really like our state ones. Thank you.
Another, yes, Councilmember.
On the affordable housing, recently, the Affordable Housing Committee recommended a statement in place where the finding of the greatest needs between 0% and 30% is the AMI. And I don't know, the Mayas Commission has a little different aspect to that, but it looks like they're kind of going in the other direction related to the actual greatest need versus hitting a target of 60 or 50 or 40. So I'd like a little more time to kind of review this before we bring it forward. Not a whole lot of time, just a little more time. Because I think there's some things in there that we may need to look at and maybe do some slight adjustments with that.
Perfect.
And then the other one is, I'm not sure, because it's been a while, but I thought the Choice Neighborhood Program replaced HOPE 6.
It replaced HOPE 6?
I'm not positive.
Okay.
I go way back, I built houses under HOPE 1, so.
It's kind of like the last.
So we graduated a little bit, but I'm not quite sure, but I'm thinking it may have been, maybe not, but we want to just check.
Okay.
Councilmember Holman, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Claude, were those log cabins?
Actually, there were hand-hued logs.
Oh. Just a word of advice to my soon-to-be former colleagues, this is a short session coming up. And in that 60 days, our legislators will be incredibly busy. And getting a word in edgewise is just literally that, a word. So if you have contacts, may I suggest that the quicker we get our state and federal priorities approved by the groups so that we can speak to them as this is what Auburn wants, now is the time to contact your state and federal legislator, but particularly our state legislators, and advocate for these principles in detail. Now's the time to meet our state legislators for a cup of coffee in an unbusy time and go over and introduce them, if you can particularly, have a cup of coffee in Auburn to introduce them visually to what the problem or the need is in this city. So get it done early, and contact your state representatives early, to my former, soon-to-be-former.
And I would just comment back to Councilman Holman that we certainly welcome your help along the way. You're still able to do it as a good citizen and former councilman.
He's a talker.
Councilmember Brown.
I also agree with Mr. DeCoursey. I would like, I like what I'm reading here. And it would be kind of nice to take it a little slow and go back and read it, and also to compare with some other stuff that I have seen, so then we'll get back with you. But not wait too long on this.
Just as an example, next week, we have finalized the legislative priorities for Affordable Housing Advisory Board, and they're on the board next Wednesday. So I'll be able to provide a little more feedback on some of those items that may tie in closer or have some verbiage we may want to include, and something I think we have for our city.
Questions, comments?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care. Next up on the agenda, this is the special focus area, Area 4A, which is having to do with the Auburn.
Valley.
Valley Humane Society Board Update. How are you, Kevin?
I am great, Councilmember Brown. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Sticking around to the end.
My wife's happy, too.
Getting to watch Monday Night Football.
So much for Monday Night Football.
I have a very short presentation for you, and largely, it was based off of the 2008 annual report that was prepared by Auburn Valley Humane Society. And while I'm typically a numbers guy, I'm not going to talk a whole lot of dollars and cents, it was all about the animals, so hopefully, I hit the mark on this. First off, I'd like to start talking about, you know, what happens when the analysts come in, and what sort of numbers are we looking at? And you can see that there's a substantial amount of activity through the shelter during the course of the year. Most of it is in the form of cats and kittens, they represent about 60% of the population that comes in the door. Dogs and puppies are 38%, and then there's another category, guinea pigs, birds, rabbits, and there was even a bearded dragon last year. And I'm pleased to say that the bearded dragon found its forever home, so it was a success story, yeah.
Is that the one with the urinary tract problem?
Yeah, Councilmember Wales, I do not know that, but I can dig into that.
No, I think that the Humane Society Director kept it, because he wears it on his shoulder every time he does a presentation. Yes.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And then we look at the intakes, a lot of that is really the public strays, as well as our animal control officer picking up strays and animals that are surrendered. So it's nice that we have this resource for those animals that just don't have a home and are looking for place to land. Let's switch over to the outcome side. Again, the split between, you know, the types of animals is about the same. The real success story is that 1,648 adoptions, which represents about 73% of the total outcomes. That makes you feel good that three out of four animals going in the door and subsequently going out the door are finding a home. Did want to talk a little bit about pet licensing. So in March 2018, AVHS became the service provider for the city's licensing program. And if we take a look at comparing Q3 2018, which is represented by the blue bar, relative to Q3 2019, which is represented by the orange bar, you see that there's a lot more activity that's occurred during the current year, and it represents about a 7% increase. So they are definitely tracking and improving the program, and we appreciate the effort from the staff side in what they're doing. Here's another good story. If we take a look at cat stays, which are represented by the blue bar, and dog stays, which are represented by the orange bar, they're both trending downwards. So good thing is, through their efforts, they are shortening that hotel stay, so to speak, and moving those animals out either to a family or another animal welfare organization. Fundraising, they really do a great job here. I've listed three of their significant fundraising events, almost hitting $500,000 for 2018. There are also 17 other fundraising opportunities that they have structured, so there always seems like there's something going on. I've had the opportunity to attend a couple of the AVHS board meetings, and one thing that struck me was the passion and commitment that these folks have for the animals and the organization. And when you take a look at these numbers here with the volunteers and donors, that's cascading up and down throughout, that, you know, people get as equally excited about supporting the animals. And I think it speaks volumes when you have 1,000 active volunteers, and each one of them are, on average, committing 34 hours a year in the pursuit of helping AVHS. Like to end with the thrift store. They've also raised a significant amount of money. What that has allowed AVHS to do is to extend the hours of operation at the shelter, so they're able to start earlier than they had in the past and stay open later than they had. And I know that was very brief, but that does conclude my presentation, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
It's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, I think it's Commander Dan O'Neil, who's going to give us a presentation on the 2019 fireworks update. NAC Calhoun, thank you for sticking around.
So this is a presentation that council had asked for, more of an expanded information on our fireworks enforcement, and possibly things to look at in the future. Commander O'Neil had put this together, so.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Thanks, Mark. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the difference between infractions and citations. Citations are linked to misdemeanor arrests. State law versus Auburn Municipal Code, what it means that a municipality has a complete ban versus state law. The challenges that we face trying to make arrests for our fireworks violations, challenges to prosecution, a review of Valley Cities, review of what surrounding cities are doing, and then our plans for next year. So currently, an infraction is civil, and it results in a monetary fine. The fine can be paid or challenged in a court by way of a civil hearing. The proof is preponderance of the evidence, meaning that it more than likely occurred. And an example of an infraction is a speeding ticket. Citations or misdemeanors require mandatory court appearance. Prosecutors have discretion on how they handle those. They can be amended to a civil penalty, dismissed, or resolved through a bench or jury trial, and the burden of proof is beyond a reasonable doubt. State law establishes when fireworks can be sold in the state of Washington and discharged. State law has set that parameter between June 28th and July 5th. We follow a similar schedule here in the City of Auburn. However, the tribe has a different schedule, they start earlier in June than state law. State law also states that it is illegal to sell fireworks such as missiles, rockets, firecrackers, basically anything that goes up and blows up, except on travel land. Consumer fireworks are fountains, spinners, smoke devices, roman candles, parachutes, wheels, shells, mortars, sparklers, essentially the fireworks that are legal in the City of Auburn. Cities that have a ban versus state law basically impose a complete ban on all fireworks, so they don't even allow the fireworks that are legal by state law. Jurisdictions that follow the, or, I'm sorry, examples are fountain spinners, smoke devices, roman candles, mortars, and sparklers. The Auburn Municipal Code basically mirrors what's legal by state law, but sparklers, fountains, torches, wheels, smoke devices. Auburn Municipal Code also makes it a misdemeanor for anyone who illegally possesses or discharges fireworks within the city. It can be punishable to a $1,000 fine. fireworks within the city. It can be punishable to a $1,000 fine and to exceed 90 days in jail. Auburn also has a municipal code where it's an infraction, a $250 fine to possess or discharge illegal fireworks in a city park. Some of the challenges that we face as law enforcement officers enforcing our law in order to arrest violators is that in order to issue a citation for a fireworks violation, officers must establish probable cause. In order to do that, they must identify facts and circumstances that a violation occurred, and a specific person is responsible for that violation. So a typical scenario is officers show up to a fireworks complaint. There's a group of people standing around discharged fireworks or fireworks that are still new and in good condition, and when nobody takes responsibility for it, they have no other alternative except to seize the fireworks. Despite a zero tolerance, officers still exercise discretion in order to avoid arresting otherwise law-abiding citizens. An example of this is law-abiding citizens. A Boeing engineer is discharging fireworks with his kids on the Fourth of July at a barbecue. Officers arrive and show up, and they exercise their discretion and don't issue a criminal citation for the discharge of illegal fireworks. You know, they understand that an engineer, for example, could have a security clearance, and getting a criminal citation for a fireworks violation could ultimately jeopardize him, his job, and his security clearance. Challenges to prosecution: Public defender funds need to be available as it is a misdemeanor crime. Most jurors view it as a minor offense and are less likely to convict. Most citizens who are cited are law-abiding with no criminal history, so prosecutor uses discretion, which results in alternatives to filing of charges. Since 2016, 19 cases have been referred to our prosecutor's office. 11 have been dismissed or have no charging decision yet. Five have been amended to infractions with a monetary fine, and three have gone to warrant status because they're associated with other criminal offenses. Reviewing what other Valley Cities have done in 2019, Federal Way has one commander, one lieutenant, and 10 officers dedicated fireworks emphasis on the Fourth of July. Their teams issued 19 charges and seven warnings between June 30th and July 6th. A firework violation in Federal Way is a civil infraction. Between June 30th and July 6th, they had 180 firework-related calls, and on July 4th to July 5th, they had 126. They also have zero tolerance, and officers are expected to issue civil infractions. The city of Renton also has civil infractions with fines ranging between $100 and $500. Their violations are enforced by the Fire Department, though, not the Police Department. Between June 30th and July 6th, they had 198 firework-related calls, and between 11:00 on July 4th and 8:00 on July 5th, 128. So like a lot of the other Valley Cities, the majority of their calls are coming on the Fourth of July. They also have a zero tolerance and a complete ban of fireworks. The city of Kent has had a complete ban for two years now. They have a civil infraction for violation, which is $250. They have four two-officer calls, cars that work fireworks emphasis. They also have two sergeants, so one commander assigned to the detail. Between July 1st through July 6th, they had 266 firework-related calls. They seized 31 pounds of fireworks this year, issued four warnings, and 16 infractions. City of Auburn has state-approved fireworks illegal on the Fourth of July. If it goes up or blows up, it's illegal. We issue criminal citations making it a misdemeanor crime. This year, we dedicated one sergeant and six officers to the fireworks stands, two sergeants and 14 officers assigned to fireworks emphasis throughout the city, and we made six arrests. This is a chart comparing Auburn to the other Valley Cities. As you can see, we're the only one of the Valley Cities that does not have a complete ban of fireworks.
Do any of the other cities, Kent, Renton, Tackwell, the Federal Way, have reservations in their boundaries?
They do not. We are the only one with a reservation. Yeah. So as you can see, we're the only one, the only jurisdiction that doesn't have a complete ban, but the only jurisdiction that makes it a misdemeanor crime and the only jurisdiction that doesn't issue infractions.
Councilmember Holman.
Commander, switching from a citation to an infraction, would the misdemeanor exception still apply?
It would not apply because it would be a civil infraction instead of a misdemeanor arrest. So it essentially
Here it depends.
Correct.
Could you explain that again to me for somebody who's, I don't have enough experience?
My apologies.
Yeah, because that's interesting.
So a criminal citation requires an officer to on-view the crime or gather evidence linking it to a specific person. A civil infraction has a lower burden of proof. It's more likely than not.
Would the Boeing employee still lose his job with a civil infraction?
No, it would just be like getting a speeding ticket.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Councilmember
If I may.
Holman.
How hard would it be to rewrite, I'm addressing the question to our city council
City attorney. City attorney.
To rewrite our particular ordinance to allow for the issuance of an infraction.
For the fireworks? Not difficult at all. It would be just an amendment of really probably, I don't have it in front of me, but probably just a few sentences. Yeah, not difficult.
Councilmember Wills.
Since we're kind of brainstorming a little bit, I've always looked at it from the point of view of safety, and which is this, Renton uses its firefighters?
Right.
What's wrong with, you know, what do people think about using firefighters and police officers? I mean, it is a safety issue. They're the ones out there that are, you know, dealing with the kids blowing their hand off.
Pardon?
We don't have the control over the Valley Regional Fire Authority to force them to do that type of work.
Well, I was saying, what do you think? And, you know, maybe they would see some merits in this. I wasn't implying that we were going to force another work group to do something, but
So just like us, if I can address that, they would have staffing issues. We've had had Fourth of Julias, if you recall, I think about three years ago, when we had the excessive heat wave.
Yeah.
I think every fire engine that we've had was out fighting fires. And so the enforcement action they could take would probably be very limited in situations like that, zero nonexistence.
So on the years when Renton has, when we have bad fires and stuff, there isn't any enforcement going on in Renton?
Can't say for sure.
Yeah, but it's probably a little bit lower.
When you think about their job function, their priority is fire and safety. Probably would not be fireworks.
Councilmember Trout.
My question is, and I've heard it several times, and other constituents have too, about living on the Muckleshoot Tribal Land and still having people causing property damages. And also, when you go and confront them about some of the property damages they're doing, they say, "Well, we're on tribal, and we can do it." But I feel like we're still in Auburn, and we have a law, and these people are not tribal people. Can we still?
So if they're causing
How do you handle?
If they're causing property damage, it can still be considered malicious mischief because they're discharging, even though it's legal to discharge that on their reservation, they're still discharging it in a reckless manner, and that's something we can enforce. Again, we fall back on misdemeanor presence rule. If it doesn't happen in our presence, then we have to gather statements and determine who lit the fireworks, who's responsible for it, and that's how we would have to address it with a citation.
Yes.
Could pitchers say, because these perpetrators, they know that the police are called, and by the time you guys come, they've already ran in their homes or they ran into their backyard. Would pitchers be evidence? Could they use pitchers as evidence that they're actually firing off these type of fireworks?
Pitchers are a start. We would also need statements from witnesses, and we would need to be able to identify the person who was involved or responsible. Without them being there, you know, we could certainly put together a montage and handle it just like we would any other criminal case.
Okay, because we have a lot of very unhappy residents up there that are not tribal, and year after year, it seems like it's getting worse. And so I live there, too, and so I want to see what we could do to try to, and I know we have to
The thing that you realize is it, if it's a misdemeanor, we're looking at, to convict somebody for that, it's beyond a reasonable doubt that that person is the one that committed that crime by lighting the fireworks and causing damage. And so it's differ from the infraction, and more likely than not, this person did it versus beyond a reasonable doubt. It's a very different standard.
Councilmember DeCarce.
So issuing an infraction, does the officer have to physically view the activity as they do if they're issuing a citation?
It's, the burden of proof is a lot smaller because it's more likely than not. So if I show up and you're standing there with firework debris at your feet, and I was a block away and heard it go off, it's more likely than not you're responsible for that. So I can issue
And if your hand's blown off, then, yeah.
Right. It's a lot easier to issue you a civil infraction.
Infractions may have a little bit more of an impact than the issues we're facing here. It's like the night when, Sunday Night Football, when Seahawks beat San Francisco, the 49ers. It was Fourth of July over again, including, not directly behind me, but up closer to the hill behind me, on the other side of me eastwards, a lot of salutes going off. So we know it's happening, you know, it's there, but again, you know, Fourth of July, New Year's Eve, Seahawks victories, whatever it is, you know, it's more than just once a year. So I'm kind of leaning toward the infraction side of it.
So the infraction, the person still has the opportunity to go to court and contest it. But since it's not criminal, the city's not obligated to fund public defenses or anything like that. A person's able to bring their own attorney if they still choose. We see that a lot in infraction court as it is, so.
Councilmember Holman.
I would be in favor of adopting an infraction ordinance for fireworks. I would not be in favor of losing the ability of the officer to use his or her discretion to issue a citation. You need both.
Good point.
So just add another tool to the tool belt. Don't remove. Because some people, they need to go to jail. That's just a fact. But the, leave that, don't remove the discretion from the officer in the field.
So am I feeling that there might be a warm feeling on this group, that we would like to see some language that allows our police officers to do both?
Sounds like we have consensus on that.
It's going to call it warm feelings, so we didn't
So do we have more to the presentation? I think there's a little bit more.
I do have a few more.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
We just got excited about this.
Yeah, no, it's good. And then, these are surrounding cities. I threw Bellevue in there because they have a complete ban, but they have a $1,000 infraction penalty. And then in Kent, they went to a complete ban two years ago, and you can see how their numbers significantly increased the first year of that ban. They went from 175 calls to 297, and then dropped off a little bit to 193 and 174. They were still significantly higher than the firework-related calls that we have here in Auburn, even with the complete ban in effect. And then we discovered a lot of these things already, the challenges to enforcement. You know, one of the biggest problems is identifying the specific location. We have officers out there that are proactively looking for firework violations in addition to the 911 calls, but until you can pinpoint the exact location, a lot of times it's over, people mixed up with what they're doing. Identifying the offender once we're on scene, you know, the officer observing it. We have one of our largest distributors of fireworks in the region located right here within our city. That makes it a challenge. And then unfortunately, we can't control what's sold on the reservation regulations as to what can be sold or based on federal standards there. Some recommendations that we have for 2020, though, are to try and work with parks and see if we can get the city parks closed around 7:00 PM before it starts to get dark. That way, we can keep folks out of the parks from discharging fireworks, and our fireworks emphasis teams can give more attention to the residential neighborhoods. Encourage businesses to post no trespassing signs or rent barricades, to close their parking lots along Auburn Way. We've noticed the last couple of years, as folks are leaving the discharge area, they'll sometimes stop off in those parking lots because the businesses are closed and use them to discharge additional fireworks. The past couple of years, once the stands have run out of product and closed, we shut down the discharge area. We think next year, we will keep that discharge area open, even once the stands close. That way, customers who purchase fireworks will be encouraged to discharge them there instead of going to parking lots or our residential neighborhoods. We want to put more of an emphasis on education through social media and public service announcements. Post, potentially post more signs advertising our firework ordinances at the city boundaries. Maybe a reader board on Auburn Way South letting patrons know when the discharge area is closed, because that contributes to the traffic problem trying to get up the hill as they're, I think they're going to get up there to go to the fireworks stands, but then they're closed and they're turned around. And then also a code red message leading up to the Fourth of July, or even on the Fourth of July, reminding citizens of our firework laws. Any other questions?
Yes, Councilmember DeCarce.
The only one I have a little bit of concern about is closing the parks at 7:00 PM on the Fourth of July. There's a lot of families out there with their kids. I'd like to look at it maybe a little bit closer to dusk rather than when this area is 7:00 PM. It's still pretty sunny outside. Hour, hour and a half, I'm not sure what that is, or the other is, but sure. I mean, we just ban fireworks at city parks and don't allow discharge at city parks.
It's already a civil in city parks. It's already a civil in city parks, and we're looking at a couple of things in conjunction with police, such as our parks that have ballfield lights, of programming the ballfield lights on during that time so the fireworks are less exciting, as well as perhaps timing our sprinkler system so that the sprinklers happen to go that night between 10:00 and 11:00. So we'll be looking at some things that we can do internally as well.
I would like to see them, parks still open a little bit longer than the 7:00 PM time.
Any other council members with questions, suggestions? Well, thank you, officers. We appreciate it so much.
Great report. Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, never mind. Disregard.
Last up, we have Resolution 5473, the director of Auburn, naming two public parks, and he's here to have this thing up.
Item 17 on your agenda, not that I was counting. Excellent job tonight, though. You did quite well.
Really looks good to me, what you proposed.
Yeah, anyhow, so Park Policy 1130 and Resolution from years ago, 2555, set forth the policies and procedures for naming public park spaces. In the Kersey III development that's known as Edge View, two public parks were required by the developer, one in Kersey A, one in Kersey B. They were built quite a few years ago and were always just known in our park guide as Kersey A and Kersey B, not very creative, and had some small names in there, such as Darren's Park, which was the one on the corner that Darren kept his eye on, and another name up the street. So Park Board led an effort to formally name these parks following the city's policies. And the one in Kersey A, which is located on Evergreen and has some evergreens that have been planted around it, the recommended name is Evergreen. And the one deeper in Edge View, in the community of Edge View, recommended name is Edge View Park. They're both 1-5 acre parks. I think there's drawings of them in your packet on page 267 and 268. Very low, not low use, high use neighborhood parks, but not parks that we program activities to. There's a small ballfield basketball court, but they're definitely neighborhood parks. Originally, they were maintained maintained by the developer until they were turned over to the city. We've been maintaining them the last three years, but we believe they should be formally named, and following the policy, those are the two names that were recommended. James Jerraj, Park Board, a future council member, lives as a neighbor to these parks and kind of led the effort up there in asking the neighbors and the neighborhood at various events what names they'd recommend, and those were the two that came forward.
Do we have any questions?
Excess.
Nice presentation.
What word are the signs?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move away from regular order and dispose of other discussion, new business in the matrix.
In other words, adjourned for tonight?
Just a suggestion, Chair.
All right. I don't see anybody fighting to stay longer. I think we're adjourned. Thank you.